This meeting of the Mayor and Board of Commissioners to order for July 24th, 2018. Calvin, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Braun.
Here.
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Commissioner Warnock.
Here.
Vice Mayor Arthur Reith.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all are in attendance with the exception of the mayor, who is away on travel.
Can you stand for Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, in the prayer section of the agenda, I'd like to call for a moment of silence, and let's remember the Howard County firefighter who lost his life this week battling a fire, and it goes to show the dangerous job that these ladies and gentlemen do every time they respond to a fire, when you hear the sirens go and you see the fire trucks. Just always remember there's a possibility that somebody could not come home from that. Augie, having many years' experience in that, I don't know if you want to say any words at this time?
It's one of the toughest moments in your life, when you hear somebody in the fire service died, especially when that person is a very close, personal friend of yours, okay? As with the police and the fire, there's the unpredictable. No matter how much you train and truly educate yourself, the unexpected will happen, and that's what happened in this case. And just prayers go out to his family, to his fellow workers, because as Chip can tell you, it is as tough on them right now as it is his family, because they are his family. You spend most of your life with those people, and it is very, very difficult to lose one of your family, especially under such tragic circumstances. So, God rest his soul. Thank you.
Okay, we'll continue on. We have a public presentation tonight, County Health Department, overdose prevention and resources. Roberta Johnson, are you Roberta?
Yes.
The floor is yours, Roberta. If you could come up to the podium, we record video and audio our meetings, and I know you've got some important information for us tonight.
Yes, and I brought actually a lot of things as well. All right, so actually, good evening. My name is Roberta Johnson. I'm the overdose prevention coordinator at the Cecil County Health Department within Alcohol and Drug Center. So I do actually want to say thank you for allowing me to come and give this brief presentation of some of the resources that we offer within the department. So I guess I can start in the area of overdose prevention. So here, within my job description, I hold several hats and capacities, and one of the things that I do on a regular basis is overdose response training. So the program has been in existence since 2014, within the state of Maryland, and within Cecil County, we have trained over 2,700 people thus far. And I believe that number is including first responders and law enforcement as well. So far with the numbers that have came in based on people and self-report, there has been 232 lives saved and counting with people who have taken this training. Now, there's probably more out there, however, that's the numbers of people coming back in and reporting. So lately, we have been consistently expanding the overdose outreach program, and that was one of the reasons why I actually come and visit town halls, more so that so the town will know exactly the resources that we have and the programs that we have to help better, maybe better help people within your area. So that training is offered every Monday night at the Health Department at 6:00. Usually, nine of the 10 times, it's me training, unless I'm on vacation, which is very soon, but it's usually me training at night. In addition to that, I always feel that community outreach is best as well. So I will travel, which I have, early Sunday, Saturday mornings and late at night, to different areas where there is a need. So that's one of the areas that I do want to touch on was the overdose prevention program. I did bring flyers and cards for the town for distribution to your leisure. In addition to that, I'm not sure if anyone has seen this lovely billboard for RewriteYourScript.org. I know there is two on 40. This is a site that has many resources for Cecil County and the neighboring areas, so it's not just recovery items, it's food, clothing, other basic needs that anyone may need. So we do have these cards that we're distributing, and also marketing the site, because it's actually a very good site for a wealth of information. So I did bring these cards as well. In addition to that, other resources and other areas that I touch is safe disposal of medication. So I do know that you have a lovely red box downstairs that is for prescription disposal, and I know that we get data from all the towns of how many pounds are coming in. So in addition to those boxes, there's six others, but in addition to those boxes, we actually been distributing detera. So these bags have been distributed at Hazardous Waste Day, and also other agencies are requesting them for people if they want to actually dispose of their medication at home. So instead of like packaging it, got to bring it down and then drop it off, they can actually put it in these bags, fill it halfway with water, put any type of medication in it, seal it, and actually throw it in the trash. So far, I believe out of the boxes that were in my office, I think we gave out about 1,200 of those. Then we got this massive donation from the state of Maryland, and we gave out close to 5,000 of those. Those bags are given to the different towns, as well as Union Hospital has some, the senior centers, anyone that comes in to refill their Narcan prescription, so just steadily giving it out to different communities. So I actually brought those as well, for your leisure. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I'm thinking our Narcan search are probably up, I mean, it's probably like two or three years, what is it, about every two to three years?
So it's every two years. So I just sent out a massive email, so about 632 people. Out of those 632, I think 80-something maybe kicked back of people who had maybe taken the training and it expired or lapsed, or their medication expired or going to expire. So I guess I can, we can communicate and see if there's anyone here in Rising Sunny, if it's the office or whatever, I can definitely come down and try.
We could probably host a training. Or a recertification for those that.
Okay.
Yeah, last time we did the training here in town halls, like 10 or 12 people.
Okay. Yeah, it's definitely, you know, not an issue. So we're in the process of, you know, recertifying, there's some people who it has lapsed, and there's more, they bring more people, so it's definitely open, you know, to recertification. Any other questions?
Does your office, you said you give out other resources, like clothes and food and stuff, do you take donations, or do you get these from other areas, or if somebody had some stuff that they wanted to give to people in need?
Well, I know the resources that we have, I guess, for like outside, however, we have had people that come in that are in need. So I don't, like, I know I have a bag of stuff in my office, just in case, so that may be something that I can always, I don't think the office would say no, but always take back to the office if people have like things that, you know, they're cleaning out their closet, you know, running over there in that season right now, because again, we have people who come in that maybe go to treatment that may not have any clothes or anything more than what they have. So I don't think we'd be against it, but, I mean, it's definitely a good idea.
Okay. Anybody else, how many questions for? Well, anybody in the audience want to ask any questions? We definitely appreciate you coming tonight.
No problem.
It's one of the biggest problems in not only the county, the state, the US at this time, as the chief can attest to, that once they get into the addiction issue, it takes over their lives, it ruins it, it turns them into criminals, and a lot of other problems, and it touches so many lives these days.
Yes.
So many families.
Because definitely in addition to that, like, one of the things I do review are the fatalities within the county, so I definitely see several situations that are trends. However, lately, we've been seeing where children are involved, or like teenagers. So there is actually a grief support group for people that would like to participate. There's also family education at the Health Department, and I know there are other agencies, such as like hospice, that do outreach for bereavement. So definitely trying to make sure that the whole family is supported, they can call the Health Department at any time and talk with a peer, talk with a counselor, or just kind of let everything off their chest, because it's definitely something that doesn't just affect that one person who passed away, it affects everyone else.
Yes. And where's the County Health Department's office located, for those that don't know?
So the County Health Department is on 401 Bow Street, it's actually right across the street from Union Hospital. So if you see the parking lot, look right across the street, and it's the little brick building next to Cecil College Elton Station.
Okay.
Is your hotline 24 hours?
So for the Health Department there, it is both normal business hours, there's usually someone there up until 7:30. Then we have a peer line, which is linked to a cell phone, so that number is actually on the back of the Rewrite card. So at any point, let's say someone needed to call, they could call and either leave a voicemail, or someone will answer, if there are needs to talk, or a need to be referred to Mobile Crisis, or any other services they may need.
Roberta, we have a table over here, if you have some things you'd like to leave, and as listeners leave tonight, if they want to pick up some stuff.
Okay, yeah, I have a whole box of stuff for you.
Oh, good, we love giveaways.
Yes. So in here is actually flyers, I have my card, which I'll give you now, and there's cards in there, there's flyers, I'll email stuff sporadically, so.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Business meeting items, looks like we have nothing tonight, Calvin?
No.
Okay. Chief, public citizens input, Brenda, would you like to speak?
Yes, Brenda Maynard, I live at 33. I have a question about the billing with the water bill. So if you're, you have your bill that came on the first, and you didn't pay it on the 20th, and you had a partial payment from last month, should you get a shut-off notice?
Calvin, could you address that?
Yes.
Why?
Number one, it's in the ordinance that any bill that is 30 days past due gets a shut-off notice. It's basically a warning notice telling people that you haven't paid. So if somebody hasn't paid, 30 days after the due date being on the 20th, that means that the bill is actually 50 days old, 50 calendar days old.
Okay.
So we send a notice.
But what about when you come in here and make a payment, and you're told, oh, your payment didn't go through, and it was for $100, and you look at your checking account two weeks later, and the payment went through for $99.91? I reported it, but I was not, I had to call back to find out why that happened, but I still haven't got a straight answer on that one.
Are you, are we talking about the same thing in the same period? Is this related to you getting the shut-off notice, or is it something that happened previously?
Well, I'm paid $100 on my bill, I only owe 54, so I'm told today by one person, oh, well, you get it because it's three months. My bill's not three months past due, and then I got told, oh, because your balance is over $40, you get a shut-off notice.
Well, I don't know about anybody telling you three months. The ordinance is if you're, first of all, we do it every quarter, we don't do shut-offs every month, we do it every quarter. And if your bill is greater than $40 and $30 past due, you get a notice telling you, because like 80 other people.
I've been this way before, but I've never got a notice.
Again, we do it on a quarterly basis. I can't, you'd have to give me a specific time, but it's not on a quarterly basis. We don't do shut-off notices every month, because if you, I know you've come to a lot of the town meetings, if you remember like four years ago, we talked about the man hours needed.
Right, and I understand that.
To do that on a monthly basis.
So that's why I thought that the shut-off notices, they weren't doing that.
Every 90 days, we do shut-off notices, because if we don't, the bills get way too high, and then, I mean, right now, we have people who know that we won't shut the water off until 90 days. We got people who won't pay their bill for two, three months, and wait till we get into this cycle.
And I understand that, it's not like I'm like three months behind.
Nobody said you were, but we have to have a line somewhere to determine who gets a bill and who gets a warning notice and who doesn't. If you're suggesting that the board should consider changing the thresholds, that's one thing, but we have to have some kind of language.
Well, I think it's every time, the last three times I've come in here to make a payment, my credit card has not worked.
Okay.
The last three times, every time, oh, it won't work, it won't work. Why won't it work? Don't know. And then last time, they gave me the thing, said it didn't work, and then I checked my checking account two weeks later, and it deducted $99.91, and it was supposed to be $100. And then when I called and talked to the lady, I had to call back to find out, hey, did this go through, what happened, and I still really didn't get an answer on why it happened.
Well, let me say this, I'm not aware of that, and you know you can always contact me if you have that, so if we have some kind of issue downstairs with service, I'd like to know that, I'd like to know when it happened.
I understand, I can't come in and use my credit card to make my payment.
Well, we don't have a credit card machine, we don't have a swipe machine.
I understand, but when they put my credit card into that computer, it's not taking it, and I don't understand why.
Well, they're going on an online, it's not, they're using our computer, but they're doing it no differently than you would at home. They're going on to a website and putting the information in, and if it's not accepting it, I can't attest, I don't know how we can control whether or not it's accepted.
Brenda, is it a credit card or a bank card tied to your checking?
It's a debit card.
Okay.
It's a debit card.
Yeah, that's different.
But like I said, last month, the girl gave me the paper, said it didn't take it, and like I said, two months, two weeks later, I looked, and I'm like, well, the payment did go, for $99.91.
Well, Calvin, can you and Judy follow up with Brenda?
Yeah, I can look into it. Well, we can't control what the credit cards do.
I do know that Judy, our new office manager, is talking to a couple of different vendors about getting credit card machines, actual like a credit card machine in here, not going into our system type thing.
She's who I talked to that didn't respond back to me and tell me why my payment didn't go through.
It might have been.
I'm like, did it go to my account, did it go to somebody else's account?
The only thing I would say in defense is, because we've been transitioning that from outside to back inside, and Judy's been doing that at the same time, learning that system, so we may have had a small breakdown there, but as Calvin said, you can.
Because it wasn't her that took the payment that time, it was someone else.
Okay, well, you know, we've had a few different faces downstairs, too, and we're working to change that to more permanent personnel and work out those bugs. But please, you know, talk to Calvin and get it straightened out.
He didn't want, he wouldn't want me to talk to him this afternoon.
Okay, good.
I'll put it that way.
Well, you know, we're not going to shut you off, because like he said, it's the first notice, you say, warning.
Calvin, maybe you want to explain that whole process for the, like, the steps that go into an actual shut-off?
I can understand if somebody owed, and like you said, you got people that know that you're not going to shut the water off for 90 days, and they let the bill build up. I understand that. But for somebody that only owes $54, and yes, this month's payment, which I am coming in on Friday to pay all of it, okay, I can't understand why you're getting a shut-off notice for that. That's, that's.
Well, you asked me a question, and in all fairness, the only way I can answer it is a way that's going to come across is not the way I'd like it to come across, but we're no different than a credit card company, the cell phone company, Armstrong, Delmarva. If a bill's not paid, a bill is not paid, so we go down a slippery slope, and we start creating thresholds of when we're going to do something, when you're talking about 1,500 customers. So if you have, just in simple numbers, if you have 1,500 customers that owe $40, that's a lot of cash flow issue. So this is what sounds insensitive, what I say, and I don't mean it to be, but we're actually a lot more lenient than other municipalities, other towns here. We've looked at it before, we've had other communities that have tell us, your bill is due on the 20th, if you don't pay it by the 30th, nobody gives you a warning notice because a bill they send out at the first of the month says your bill is due on the 20th, if you don't pay it by the 30th, it's going to get shut off. We try to be more lenient. So we send out a bill on the first, thereabouts the first, we give people till the 20th. The next time we do a bill on the first of the next month, we recognize that somebody has not paid their bill, it still carries over into their next bill, and we do the warning notices every 90 days, and in the warning notice, you could have someone who hasn't paid a bill for up to roughly 120 days, or someone in your case that gets caught, it's 50 days from the time the bill came out, but it's still 50 days. And so again, we don't just show up and shut the water off, we send a notice saying, hey, you haven't paid your bill, and this, every time you guys ask me to explain this, I always get the feeling there's people out on the video saying, okay, now we know the timing, let's stretch it out more and more, because we send the notice out, and let's say, I think your shut-off was next Tuesday, if you don't pay it by next Tuesday, we don't come out and shut the water off next Tuesday, we'll send our guys out again and put notices up saying, hey, you still haven't paid your bill, and if it doesn't get paid after that, we still show up the day before the water's supposed to be shut off, and we hang a door knocker on the door. So we make like three to four attempts to try to get somebody to pay their bill.
My water bill, my water was shut off was before, and I got one notice, and that was it.
How long ago was that?
It's been a while.
We've changed it.
Again, other communities don't even come anywhere near doing that, so we do try to be lenient and compassionate with people when they're paying their bills. But again, we just go down there, and if something, look, Judy and I were talking about it today, we want to talk to you folks, we want to put a recommendation forward, because it's one of the, look, I'm going to be honest, it would be a lot easier if we just shut the water off. There's no thought to it, really, it's really, it's really difficult to try to come up with a threshold that doesn't allow people to take advantage of you, but yet gives the relief to people that you know really need relief on it. So it's a moving target all the time, and as we've done this now for, I think it was adopted in 2016, we're ready to come back with a couple more recommendations to tighten it up in some areas and to make it a little bit easier for folks in other areas, so we are trying.
And we feel, I got a water bill, I'm not immune to it, nobody on this board's immune from a water bill. We all get water bills, so we know, we know the price is tough, we know the timing, you know, when we first moved here, it was, a bill came out every three months, and it could be quite a big bill. So we thought.
I have those, relax.
Yeah, I had those too, so we went to the monthly, so it's easier to budget, instead of trying to save it for three months, so, okay. Staff reports, chief.
During the last period of 7:10 through 7:24, we handled 144 calls for service, that's a little bit down, with 30 traffic stops. There has been nothing, no unusual trends or anything that have developed during that time period. Within the last few days, you've noticed that it's rained quite a bit, and we have the potential of standing water on some roadways. If you see that, please stop and turn around, don't try driving through those areas. Traditionally, down near Veterans Park, we used to have a lot of moving water across the roadway, not as much anymore, thanks to commissioner's hard work, but you do have the areas down near the trailer park and all that, we still get some high water, and over in front of Johnstons. So if you see water moving at a rapid rate, don't try to go, because you don't know if there's a roadway underneath or not. Turn around and go an alternate route. The police department's in the process of working to upgrade our computer system. We've had numerous problems lately with connectivity to the county, and some of the programs are not working. We've worked with several vendors to get that corrected, and hopefully, within the next few weeks, we'll have those problems taken care of, and we'll be back to full service with the computer systems. With that being said, that's my report for this evening, unless we have some questions.
Thank you. Town administrator?
Just following up on what the chief was talking about, the high water, the amount of water coming down. If you recall in the past, we did have some issues with the lagoon. People who remember that used to be the primary way the town treated the wastewater in the community, but essentially, when we built the new sewer plant, the outflow in the lagoon got blocked off, so it's basically just water sitting in there now. We have to do everything we can to make sure that it does not overflow, and what we routinely do is keep it about 15 to 20 inches below the flood rim level. Interesting thing that I guess I'll bring up that we learned is you could possibly make an argument that one of the reasons why the town was having a problem complying with the effluent treatment at the sewer plant back in the day, at the lagoon, was because I don't think anybody realized how much of an underground spring was actually feeding into the lagoon, because when the first month or so that we shut the outflow off, the lagoon, I'm going by memory, I think in about a six-month period, the lagoon level rose about 15 to 18 inches, although it was a rainy time period, we had only had like three inches of rain fall during that time, so that's when we realized there must be some kind of underground spring feeding the lagoon, which if you remember the way the lagoon treatment process was, the molecule of bad water came into the pond and was supposed to be retained for a certain amount of time for the natural process to take place to treat that bad molecule of water. But when you get rainwater coming in it, or infiltration, or in this case, an underground stream coming into it, that bad molecule of water, and all the other bad molecules of water, go through the pond a lot quicker, let's hypothetically say it had to stay in the pond for 52 hours, you could make an argument that some of that bad water was probably circulating through the system in maybe 20 hours because of the amount of bad water, of rainwater that was coming into the system. So that underground spring became very evident when we dammed off the outflow. So as a result, we have permanent pumps hooked up into the. So as a result, um we have permanent pumps hooked up into the lagoon and we do what you call decanning. And we decant water from the lagoon and bring it back into the headworks of the wastewater treatment plant to let it go through the normal cleaning process. So that enables us to keep the levels down to about fifteen to twenty inches is what we shoot for. So we're, we're fine from that standpoint. The, now that we have our budget done, we are, with, with our staffing, we're going back through and redoing our allocation tables. And what I mean by that is if you recall in the budget process, we basically have a breakdown of just about all the expenditures that we have and we allocate them to different departments. Well, you're not always able to update those every year. So sometimes you rely on allocation tables. It might be two or three years old. So um we are going through the process of redoing all those allocation tables to make sure that we're properly uh charging expenses to the right departments. The other thing that I wanted to remind everyone is that um under the new trash bid um with waste management and waste management was not the only one that bid it this way. There is technically, and we haven't seen it yet, but there is technically now a fifty-dollar charge for the pickup of bulk items. Whereas the town over the years was always able to have the trash hauler pick up that, those bulk items, uh account, share, whatever, free of charge. Now the trash hauler is uh looking to charge us fifty dollars. We've not seen it yet. We raised a big fuss over it. We'll see if they do actually charge us, but just to give everybody a heads up, there is that charge. That's all I have.
Okay, under uh reports, I I really don't have anything tonight except just to say the same thing along with the chief said. Check your sump pumps, check your gutters. If you have a storm drain in the street in front of your house, help out the public works guys, make sure it's not getting clogged up with leaves and or a sunken one like that one in front of your house that collects right there. Because this, this has been bad and it's not over yet. So, uh Commissioner Braun, you have anything tonight?
No, I have no report.
Commissioner Pearson?
Uh I don't have anything for the uh public safety, but I do have a, something to think about. Last Thursday night, we were at the MML meeting and Belair had to host uh because of Aberdeen, uh for whatever reason, didn't. And they are looking for somebody to host the October uh meeting. Is it something we wanna think about? They asked for a volun- they asked basically for any towns to volunteer. But uh something to kick, kick around for us.
Once Travis gets back, since he usually has all the connection tool.
The thing you'd be competing with would be spectacular and all that, so you might, you'd have a lot going on in my mouth. Civil war reenactment. Yeah, we'd have all kinds of stuff on.
Yeah, I'm just, I, they, they asked us, they asked the, the uh members that were there. So, that's it.
Good, we'll take it on. Commissioner Warren?
Yep, so um the uh boardwalk that uh-
Do you have any pictures?
I, I forgot to get the pictures, the laptops or the computer. Um we actually had a, a section of the boardwalk, probably about half the boardwalk is framed out and about half of that stacked. So we've got about thirty feet roughly of boardwalk completed. Um probably twenty to thirty feet roughly of boardwalk completed uh since uh Saturday, I believe it was. And um-
Who's the House Brothers?
This is the, one of the House triplets, his project and uh it's, I think this one's uh Ryland, yeah, Ryland's, yeah. And um of course, I've got all three of them there, so I can never remember which proj- who, whose project it is. I got, but it's Ryland's project, I'm pretty sure. And uh so we got a, a good bit of that done. As soon as we get this one done, then we'll hopefully get started on the dog park soon. Um I've had some questions on that.
How many, how many boardwalks have you built in the, in the past year?
In Veterans Park in the past-
In the, back in the trail area, where you built a bridge and all?
Yeah, probably about four in the past year.
That's what I thought, quite a few.
So we're number four, I think. And uh so this should be the last of the really like significant ones. We may have a couple of real minor ones to build that. One of the things that's been exposed this week is some areas that are a little wider than we thought. So we may just take and, you know, without, like, these have a lot of structure to them, so they're you know, we have basically pavers sitting on the ground, cause they're wet ones, so you can't, you know, we're not going into the ground. We just sit pavers on the ground to get them level. And then we drop a four by four across and then we put two by sec- two by six framing on top of that and then two by six decking on top of that. So it's like twelve inches high by the time we get done or so. And so there's a significant amount of framing. We're looking at some of these areas where it's not that deep, where it's just, just marshy, I'd say more than anything. We're gonna probably put like a two by four across, basically just similar on the ground. Uh two by fours or two by sixes across and then deck right across them. So they'll, it'll just raise it up maybe six inches, just enough to get out of water. Yeah, they're not very often that they're wet, so we'll, we'll figure something out for some of those areas. But um, yeah, so we're, we're just about done with that though. The uh, it does look like all the flood mitigation, stormwater management projects we did in the park have had a significant impact. On Sunday, I believe it was, late Sunday night, the driveway from the graveyard, across graveyard was flooded like you would normally expect when the water comes over. Hopewell Road there, the driveway was up that high where the stream's coming down from behind like the mushroom farm. But the water in the park stayed in the channel and never even really got up much higher than the pipes. So it, it's made a significant impact. This would have been a rainfall that I'm almost certain would have breached the road. And you can actually see it never even left the channel. So we didn't have any flooding in the park. We didn't have any flooding across the road. So the work that we've done in Veterans Park appears to be making a difference.
That, that pad at the, where the playground is, is that still under warranty? That's still got that hole in it?
Yeah, Calvin, do you have any update on, have we been able to hold of the, the um, the rubber surface at the playground? There's some holes that need to be patched.
No.
They were still having trouble getting uh that company back out to fix it. So, if we can follow up on that. So anyway, we're, we're seeing that, you know, the projects that we've uh taken on in the last few years are definitely having an impact. And uh we have a few more things in the works. We'll be done here soon with a good bit of the trail system within the park and I, we're gonna do like a, like a walking ribbon cutting. So each one of the projects is actually done by somebody different. So what we'd like to do is bring all the scouts back for ribbon cutting and when we get to each one of their projects, we'll talk about it a little bit. Cut the ribbon, move on to the next one, till we do like a tour of the whole trail. So be something a little different.
Nice, yeah. Yeah, those scouts have done a lot of work there. Speaking of ribbon cutting, so we're still waiting for the grand opening of Rise and Grind across the street. See that they're over there working tonight on one of the two buildings. And then uh NLX Fitness is looking to do a open house ribbon cutting for their expansion into their new uh section over there where the hair salon closed up. We'll keep you guys posted on that. So. Tom, did you have any kind of a presentation for us tonight?
Not really.
Okay.
But I mean, I, I do have data to give to basically Calvin.
Okay.
Trying to set up a meeting basically to, to keep the project moving and sort of add a tie into the planning.
Okay, good. I know you and I talked a couple of weeks ago. Glad to see you here tonight. All right, um we'll start wrapping things up. Some upcoming announcements, there's a planning commission workshop Monday, August the sixth, six thirty PM. Uh our next town meeting is Tuesday, August the fourteenth, here at seven PM. Another planning commission workshop, Monday, August twentieth, six thirty PM. And then our second um meeting for August, Tuesday, the twenty-eighth. And believe it or not, you know, we're already talking about uh the September third holiday, Labor Day will be closed. Before you know it, kids will all be back to school and will you be taking up donations again next month, Lisa?
We are going to do one thousand two hundred thirty-four kids, about nine hundred of them. So you have until July thirty-first to get a ticket.
And what are you looking for?
Everything.
Everything? Backpacks, clothes, pencils?
No, not my clothes.
What are you looking for? Just school supplies and stuff? Okay. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else to come before tonight?
Second.
I would have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion adjourned. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.